Good afternoon. I'm City Councilor Mary Ann LeBarre from Ward 6, and I would like to call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is the appointment and swearing in of Mary L. Madour, Clerk of the City Council. Swearing in will be done by our City Clerk Wendy Mazna. Wendy?
We need a motion. You need a motion.
I that we recognize Mary, that we appoint Mary Madour as the Secretary for the Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I, Mary Madour.
I, Mary Madour.
Do solemnly swear that faithfully and partially.
That faithfully and partially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As Executive Secretary of the City Council.
As Executive Secretary.
Secretary for the City Council.
In accordance with the rules and laws of the City of Northampton.
In accordance with the rules and laws of the City of Northampton.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the City of Northampton.
And the ordinances of the City of Northampton.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations, Mary. [applause] Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor Dwight?
Here.
Counselor Klein?
Here.
Counselor LeBarre?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Here.
Counselor Sceara?
Here.
Okay. I'd like to call for a motion to open nominations for City Council President.
So moved.
I make a motion to nominate Bill Dwight.
Wait a second.
I need that motion.
Second.
To open nominations?
Yes. I nominate Bill Dwight as our Council President.
Second.
And we got Jesse Adams, who seconded that.
Can I speak to, I think Bill did a great job. I want to thank him for doing it. I hope you will do this again. I hope you win. And I've really appreciated the work you've done. I thought you did a really fine job in the last term. Just thank you.
My reasons for nominating Bill Dwight as our Council President, I think because of our new charter and the change in our City Council now without our mayor being the Chair, I think you had a big task, and I think you've done well with it. And I feel very dedicated to you as a City Councilor because I know what you can do and what you cannot do. And I appreciate all the hard work that you've done.
Thank you.
A move to close nominations?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. He's got it.
We didn't give him a chance.
Can we need to do a roll call?
He can still speak to his, I was just closing nominations.
Could I speak to the nomination? Um, I, thank you. I'm grateful for the prospect and the opportunity to become Council President again. I, I think most of you know I was, I was a reluctant Council President last time, and have since come to appreciate the position particularly under the, under the guidelines of the new charter. And I think, in any success that I may have had was simply due to the cooperation and kindness of my fellow councilors. It was, everyone conducted themselves with great patience and respect, and that was great. So that's, that's not a very difficult job ultimately. But I think, I mean, what I would like to do as President is demystify governance, particularly municipal governance, to make people understand that we're neighbors, we're your friends, mostly. I mean, sometimes people might not consider us that, but the fact is that, I remember when I used to approach the City Council before I got involved in the city government, you used to terrify me. My heart would go into palpitations and I'd, you know, just looking at this august body. And I realized that whatever we do to project that is not, doesn't help us necessarily. And I think so, that's, I mean, I think, given the fact that we worked so well last term, I anticipate and hope that we'll have the same success this term. So thank you for your nomination and your second Counselor Adams and, and your kind words, Counselor Spector.
last term as President, but willing to serve again. And especially the ability with which he managed this, this Council's deliberative process, the way, and because it's not easy, sometimes as we've heard it, like herding cats, but also the leadership that he's shown for this Council and for our responsibility in this, in this government. So happy to support Counselor LeBarre.
Thank you.
Okay. So we need to do a call for a roll call to elect Bill Dwight for City Council President.
Counselor Adams?
Dwight.
Counselor Carney?
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Dwight?
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Klein?
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor LeBarre?
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Murphy?
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Sceara?
Counselor.
Counselor Spector?
Counselor Dwight.
That's it.
Okay. We changed chairs now, so.
This is yours. I take this.
Thank you.
Here you go, Mary Ann.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Oh. Thank you. Very formal ceremony. Ah! Thank you all. Thank you. Okay. I fit in this seat. Counselors, new and old, before you, before getting underway, you have a new collection of recyclable materials here that, for you. This is your counselor kit that Mary Madour puts together. And by the way, so there's, in the interest of demystifying everything, actually, everything in city government is run by Mary Madour. The meetings go because Mary, if we didn't, if Wendy didn't swear in Mary Madour, the city would collapse. So you will, I think, do they have their placards?
Yes.
It's in, it's in the kit?
There it is.
Oh, you already got your plaque, okay.
The parking placard?
Parking placards.
Very important. New council.
Yeah. Parking placards are only to be used while doing city business, not visiting bars at off-hours, which some councils have used in the past, but we've changed that rule. So while you're conducting city business, meeting with constituents or having meetings, you find a parking space, the placard will be a very comforting thing to have, particularly on a day like today.
It must be.
But don't use it during off-hours and don't use it, just don't abuse it, please. Thank you. So, um, yeah, would you? That'd be great. Mary's going to break down your counselor kit for you.
You have a listing of every counselor and your information. If there's anything wrong or you want to change email or phone numbers or anything, just let me know. The schedule of meetings, which we'll vote on shortly. The rules and orders, which we'll vote on shortly. And I just want to bring to your attention that the Committee on Hearings, Investigations, and Practices was passed with three members being appointed to it. No amendment was made at the last meeting to change that.
There was an amendment that was discussed to only appoint the Chair, but we never voted on it. So it'd be something to consider today.
Then you have, then you have information for open meeting law, conflict of interest law, and online training certificates, which you'll need to complete and please return to me by February 7th, 30 days. The open meeting law is very simple. You just sign the certificate of receipt because the open meeting law is printed and in your book. The acknowledgement of the summary of conflict of interest law is also simple because that's printed and in your book. And then the online training you'll need to take through mass.gov, and there are instructions on how to take that training. And the last thing that's in here is the, for you to indicate which council committees you would like to be considered for, which you'll give to the Council President sometime soon so that he can start deciding who will be on which committees. And Counselor LeBarre did point out to me that the Commission on Disability needs a counselor, but that person is not a non-voting liaison, that is a voting member. And then you have information that was actually given to us two years ago by Counselor Dwight about majority votes, how to do an executive session, why to do an executive session, and the actual charter, and some MMA materials.
I've invited the city solicitor for our next actual meeting to come and give us a primer on open meeting law, and so we can all be up to speed on that. And it's certainly helpful, a refresher. The ethics, it's called an ethics test, although it's, you take it until you, till you pass it. So it's not, it's not particularly challenging, although interestingly enough, the Hadley Police Department, the police chief gave the answers to his department somehow not understanding the concept of ethics and what you're being tested for. So don't sweat it, don't stay up all night cramming for it. It's actually, it's, it's more designed to educate you on the nuance of, at least Massachusetts' perception of what ethics are, at least as what Massachusetts general law stipulates. Our next order of business, actually, while we're still in the informal stage, I'd like to acknowledge the three new counselors that have joined us, and I'm going to struggle to pronounce all their names correctly. Alisa Klein, Gina Louise Sceara, Ryan O'Donnell.
Say it better than my family does.
Thank you all very much. I'm, I'm really looking forward to working with you, and I know the other counselors share that feeling, and I'm really excited about the prospects. And, and we will exercise patience, and hopefully you will as well, as you guys try to find your sea legs and, you know, figure out. You'll also be getting a copy of Robert's Rules of Order, which you should have on your desk. The, is that the, which edition is that?
Eleven.
Oh, it's the most, okay. Yours is shinier compared to ours. The, the.
Eleven?
Is it the same edition? They just have a shinier cover.
Oh, eleven. Well, no, we have a tenth. I have a tenth.
It's ours.
Oh, okay. In any event, the council, we abide by Robert's Rules of Order, we actually refer to it, but would take precedence as the council rules have been established and under order. When there's a question, we refer to Robert's Rules of Order. Essentially, our, and I've forgotten the official term for the person who understands.
Parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian. Our unofficial parliamentarian has been Counselor Adams, which actually now leads me to our next item on the agenda, which is calling for the election of the Vice President of the City Council. And we will open it up, the floor for nominations.
Don't we need to move, can we go straight into nominations, or do we need to move it?
Yeah, actually, move to open nominations.
Move to open nominations.
I move to.
Second. I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor of opening nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Counselor LeBarre?
Yes, I would like to nominate Jesse Adams as our City Council Vice President.
Second.
There's a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Any discussion on the nomination? Any comments on the nominee?
I think you might have to.
Counselor LeBarre?
I am definitely supporting Jesse Adams as our City Council Vice President. I think he's done a fantastic job with all the ordinances, working through the charter and so forth. And I know even with quite a bit of my residents who have called him, he was immediately on the phone calling them back. I really like what you've done this last term, Jesse, and I feel that you should be our City Councilor Vice President.
I would also like to speak to the nomination. Counselor Adams was instrumental, as Counselor LeBarre pointed out, in the development of the new charter, from, from the original discussions leading up to the process, involved in the process, and then involved in the deliberation and of, and establishing the charter. He's also instrumental in redesigning and streamlining the council rules and council committees, which at times were just a little clunky. And also, the biggest challenge coming from the fact that some of the rules were in conflict of the existing, the new charter system. This is, I mean, you know, there weren't too many people we could call on to try and negotiate and navigate how we were going to reconcile the old rules with the new charter. And Counselor Adams has devoted energy, thought, and, and came up with good solutions to the challenges that were met. And I think that he's a very able Vice President, and, and I hope at some point to give him the opportunity to sit in this chair when I'm absent so that he can smack a gavel a couple of times. So he's not going to have to go on vacation or something, or have a conflict of interest. Are there any other comments on the nomination, or anyone interested in ordering any other nominations?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
Nominations have been, there's a motion to close nominations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mary, would you call the roll call for?
Just briefly.
Yes, please.
Just one thing, things I'd like to say is, thank you. I've been happy to do it, and I'd be happy to do it again for the next term. What I'd like to do is, if, if there are further need for it to reconsider the rules, I'd be happy to take a read on that or work with any counselors. And also, being that we're giving the, the new committee's structure a, a chance, if there's, if there are any, any concerns, if it isn't functioning up to the counselors' expectations, I'd be happy to work with the counselors and the Council President to try to reconfigure them or get them right. So thank you very much.
Mary, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Carney?
Counselor Adams.
Counselor Dwight?
Counselor Adams.
Counselor Klein?
Counselor Adams.
Counselor LeBarre?
Counselor Adams.
Counselor Murphy?
Counselor Adams.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Counselor Adams.
Counselor Sceara?
Counselor Adams.
Counselor Spector? Adams.
Counselor Adams.
Counselor Adams.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. The, oh, that's where we now have to appoint the enrollment committee. And I, and does that actually require nominations and elections?
No.
No. I get to appoint?
Yes, you do.
Yo, you too. Alisa and Jesse, you are, and what this means is, it's, basically, you're the ones who get writer's cramps. After every ordinance that we pass, that you guys have, there have to be two counselors that sign off on the appointments committee. So when we do these huge stacks of zoning changes, actually, I think zoning changes we all have to sign now.
Yeah.
But in any, most, most of the ordinances, you'll just be applying your signature.
Is it by virtue of the geography here?
Exactly. I'm sorry. I, no, no. It's by the august nature of your office. That's.
And proximity to Mary Madour.
Counselor, I want the minutes to note the "yo" in there.
I nominate "yo." All right. Next up is the City Council Joint Rules and Orders. This is upon the recommendation of the City Council. Whoop, whoop. This is upon the recommendation of the City Council order that the attached joint rules and ordinances, and orders be adopted for the 2014 to 2015 City Council.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on this is probably in order, and Counselor Adams spoke to this a little bit. The, these rules are our rules. These, and then the committees that will be voting on are our committees. We make them up. So this is not, we actually, so if there is difficulty with the rules, somebody finds that it's, it's impeding their process to legislate well, then please make a suggestion or recommendation to me or Counselor Adams, and we'll work on trying to adjust that. Because I mean, it's, the purpose of these things is to actually make government work and function, particularly for us, so, and, and by extension, all the people that we serve. So, is there any further discussion on, on the rules? Now, no? Counselor?
Rule 34 is the duty to report rule. No, that's the time we filed.
Yeah, that's the time we filed.
The duty to report rule is.
Thirty-one?
Thirty-one, thank you. And it states that it shall be the duty of every committee of the council to hold an initial meeting within six months after members of the committees have been appointed. That rule used to read that, once something's referred to a committee, they have, it was 60 days, I believe, to report. And when I was making these changes, I cut that out and didn't replace it. So if we could just do that now.
amend that?
If we could amend that, so that rule 31 reads the next sentence is, each council committee will, will, will report to the full council within 60 days.
Of a, of a referral.
I'll second that amendment.
Are there any questions about that?
Just one, one question. I mean, occasionally, we have times, most committees meet once a month, so occasionally we have a month where there may be nothing really pending or some other reason that the committee may not meet. And I think there've been numerous times where we may not have reported back within 60 days. So I'm wondering if that 60 days is hard and fast, because it seems like our practice has been that often something might, especially if it goes over the summer or over some other holiday time.
We can make it 90. And I, and I agree, I don't think we're always in compliance every time. I just, I just don't think that, that rule is, you know, something that every Chair was always aware of. So is that a friendly change? But 90, I mean, if you want to change it to 90.
And presently, it says within six months? Did you say?
No, no, that, that's a separate part of it. That, every committee has to meet within six months, but, but the duty to report when something is referred to a committee, that was, the rule was that they have to report back to the full council within 60 days until I accidentally deleted it.
Well, if it's a friendly.
Is that a friendly?
Yeah, to make it nine, I think 90 days might just be more in line with whatever. I mean, not that saying that things typically take 90 days, but there are many times, yeah, so that we don't feel like we're inadvertently in violation of our own rules.
Rather than be at 60 days and call for suspension of rules?
Right. Because it has to be at the full council level anyhow. That doesn't, that's kind of, except that as a friendly amendment.
So did you get that, the friendly amendment to 90 days?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That's for the amendment. Now, back to the original order. All those in favor of the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The council has accepted the rules unanimously?
That's first reading.
That's first reading. This is upon the recommendation of the City Council order that the attached City Council meeting schedule for 2014, 2015 be and hereby be adopted. You should have copies of the meetings. I will read the, at least the tentative meeting schedule that's being recommended here. The organizational meeting which you're experiencing right now, the next meeting will be January 16th, February 6th, February 20th, March 6th, March 20th, April 3rd, April 17th, May 1st, May 15th, June 5th, June 26th, July 10th, August 14th, September 4th, September 18th, October 2nd, October 16th, November 6th, November 20th, December 4th, and December 18th. Is there, first of all, accept a motion?
I move to accept these. And then.
Second. Counselor Spector?
I just have a request, just if it is not a conflict for anybody, or we put them out to change the meeting of the August 14th to either the 1st to August 7th or August 21st. But if it's a problem for anybody else, that's fine. It's just since we're setting it for the whole year, and I know I have a.
Counselor, that's just for the month of August?
Yes, just that one, that one time.
So you want to change, you want to change the August 14th one to?
Yeah, to either the, any other time in August would be fine with me, but again, that is just a personal request, and if anybody else has any problem with that date, I would withdraw that request.
With the new counselors, we meet twice a month, with the exceptions of July and August, where we meet once a month, and then we can also call emergency sessions if need be.
Just, if we're looking at August, I'm typically not hearing that loud, so you're talking about maybe switching it to the 1st?
Any other but August 14th?
Well, the 1st is a Friday.
I mean, the first, the first Thursday.
First Thursday.
Which would be the 7th.
Yeah, with the 7th, 14th.
The 7th would be a month after, would be a month after July's meeting.
Any preferences? My wife is giving me a thumbs down from the audience, so I don't know what that's for, though, but you're not allowed to deliberate. Any other thoughts on the, on the, on the meeting? As I said.
Can we give counselors, you know, another two weeks to look that over? And, I mean, this doesn't.
I mean, I, this is one meeting.
Right.
So if, I mean, I have no objections, and, you know, the, the biggest point is trying to get a quorum to show up, and so if everyone has any knowledge this far besides Counselor Spector, I don't, you know, no? So what's, Counselor LeBarre?
Right. I look at it this way, no matter what, we're scheduled for a meeting, if you cannot attend the meeting, then you're not here. We do book the month of July and August. Usually, it's the third Thursday of the month, but because of the budget hearing, that's why it was booked earlier for the month of July. I don't have a problem with changing the time, and if somebody has a vacation booked, then they're not here.
Counselor, Counselor Adams?
Also, one of the things I'd like to do is, I spoke with Counselor Dwight about this, actually it was his idea, to adopt the state law that allows for remote participation if, if people are away and, if, well, that doesn't necessarily mean they can participate remotely, but that might help if people are away and they can participate remotely. But we do have to adopt this provision of the state law before we can do that. So that's one of the things I'd like to do.
Right, thank you.
Just to clarify, it doesn't allow for the Chair to participate remotely, if I'm correct, right?
Well, the Chair can preside, but the Chair can participate.
Can participate, okay.
Has a vote, but cannot preside.
Right.
But yes, we can actually conduct governance by Skype or other, you can, you can be present via computer in council meetings in the State of Massachusetts now, but it has to be adopted and approved by the council, which I think will be, that's, I'm glad Counselor Adams reminded me of that, that would be something, that would be an order that will be discussed. So that said, I, I think the request stands that the, to change the August meeting. Counselor LeBarre brings up an interesting point, because what drove the August discussion was the budget issue that was now because of the new mandates under the charter.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the July, but then we don't know what we're going to run into in August. So, Counselor Murphy?
Well, in July, we, we can make changes in the previous year's budget up until the middle of July.
Right.
So we want to meet, we don't want to meet after that in case we have to tweak the previous fiscal year. So we all, we try and meet whatever Thursday is before that deadline so that we can make changes in the previous fiscal year that we might need to, to balance the books.
So what's the consensus? What's everyone's, before we take a vote, what's everyone's preference here on this? Anyone have any objections, one way or the other? No?
Just vote first reading.
Why don't we do that? We'll vote this first reading, and then we'll. We'll vote this first reading, and then we'll... I would like to ask the mayor if there's any issue that he'd be concerned about with, because it is a short meeting. But, I mean, I honestly don't see a problem. So, if we could vote for this unamended in first reading, and then the second reading will, of course, be at our next meeting, which, if you'll look, is on the 16th. Counsel Murphy.
Now, is this... Are we also adopting these times?
Yeah. Because, yes, the times are also...
Part of the motion.
That is part of the motion, where public comment starts at 7:00 and the regular meeting at 7:05.
Because we did move it forward, and I know in our last session, we did have those occasions, when some of us were voting that they didn't want to continue at 11:00. So, if our new counselors are feeling particularly long-winded, we might want to entertain a discussion of perhaps moving our start time forward, so we don't run into that 11:00.
May I?
Speaking for myself, I'm pretty much losing it by 11:00.
Yeah, I... Just from what we've experienced, I don't know that it matters whether we start at 6:00 or 7:00 in terms... I think the longer we schedule the meeting, the more time we could... It's that much time we could be here. So, I don't know that changing it from 7:00 to 6:30 means that those times that we ended up here at 11:00, we would have ended our meeting at 10:30. That's just my sense, that I don't know that the start time... You would think that it might. I don't know that the start time has that much impact on the end time.
Counselor Spector.
We moved it to 7:00. I actually think, we actually ended up voting more times to continue after 11:00. I think groups just tend to fill the time. So, I would prefer not to move it earlier, especially to 6:30, since in public session, many people are coming home from work and needing to get here. It seems like an awkward time to ask the public to show up. So, I'd like to keep the hours where they are, and, you know, we can vote on whether to continue or not.
Counsel Labarche.
Yes, I have to agree with my counselors. I think the 7:00 time is the right time. And I feel if we have to extend our City Council meeting, and we have to stay over another half hour or an hour, then that's the way it would be.
For the new counselors, we actually, we have a... The new rules you just voted on call for the meeting to end, to go no further than 11:00, unless we suspend the rules.
And it takes six counselors to suspend that rule? And we've actually... We've actually ended meetings...
Surprisingly.
Without enough votes.
In the middle of a motion.
And Counselor Spector made a good point, though. I mean, I think if we were to look at the record, we've needed to suspend rules to extend beyond 11:00 more times since we went to the earlier start than when we started our meeting at 7:15, actually, 7:30. So, I think it's more a matter of the nature of the conversation and the people involved and the issues than it is the actual time.
Counsel Murphy.
And again, I brought it up so that we would have entertained the topic, but since everyone feels like that we would, in fact, fill whatever available space we were provided with, then I'll take that as everyone's commitment to be clear and concise and to the point. So, if we can fill the space, we can also not fill the space and get out of here on time, because I know we run into trouble with that extension every now and then.
I would actually like to ask us to consider, and our, you know, as time goes on, looking at that rule in particular, because I can see how, especially since it requires a supermajority, it could be used to squash an issue, or, you know, it could be used in the wrong way, a way that it wasn't really intended, so...
Counsel Adams.
I was actually discussing with the council president, we have a bunch of options. We can delete the rule, but, you know, that presents its own set of issues. One time, you know, the last time there weren't enough votes to suspend the rule, I moved to reconsider. We can also do that. We can move to reconsider the rule, not minority reconsideration, but reconsideration, which any counselor can do, and you can do it, that allows you to revote on the issue you just voted on.
And also, I'd like to point out, too, that any counselor could move to adjourn the meeting at any time, and if that doesn't require a supermajority, that requires just a majority. So, I mean, doing away with the rule itself might be something that we want to consider.
Okay. Worth discussing that.
Counselor...
I would actually keep the rule. I think many legislative bodies, and certainly most bodies that meet and have meetings, set an agenda, and I think that it just gives you a framework. We really have not had that much of a problem, even that one evening when we voted not to continue. And in the years I've been here, I've never seen the rule abused in a way that to squash an issue, and the issue can always come back, because it's not over. So, I think it's important to kind of have a framework and say, look, this is when we try and end by. We don't have an agenda that sets, you know, it's not an agenda trying to be overly efficient by saying, we'll talk about this for 20 minutes and this for 30 minutes, which is actually how many legislative bodies work. I think having some deadline to say, let's try and do that, kind of recognizing it, I'd like to continue that, knowing we can always extend.
Well, I'd like to note that our conversation about our length of conversations has been a long conversation. Counsel Murphy.
Well, it's, I think, respectful, because you'll become surprised, the new members, how many people actually are riveted to watching these meetings. And it's sort of respectful of them that we're going to try and conclude our business at a reasonable time for them to keep track of what we're doing, you know? We're not doing things in the wee hours, when the gallery's empty and we're here by ourselves. And to some extent, I think we can also control it when we build our agenda. You know, our agenda, at least in my opinion, consists of things that are action items for the City Council, and a lot of times, we end up with all kinds of dog and pony shows here that might not necessarily be action items for the City Council, but wind up here as a way to get them on television. Perhaps they could find other ways to do that.
Are there any other thoughts on this? All right. So, the rule's actually as unamended, as presented. This is a vote on accepting these meetings and these times. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? This is first reading, and as I said, Counselor Spector will review the times, and it's subject to modification at the second reading. Do, do, do. Oh, okay. So, you've got, you do have, as Mary pointed out in your packets, the open meeting law materials and instructions for online training, as I said, and the conflict of interest law. Usually, a safe bet, one in doubt, the slightest inkling of doubt, defer to that doubt. That's what the State Ethics Board always says every time I've called them up with any inkling. They always say, defer to that doubt, and unless it's really critical, it's probably okay to recuse yourself from a certain situation. The State Ethics Board is available for strange, complicated situations, that you can call them. Counsel Murphy.
If you have advance warning, if you know something's coming, the solicitor's always been willing to raise your opinion in advance. Sometimes it just pops up. But a lot of times, if you know an issue's coming and you're wondering about your status, you can check with the solicitor in advance to say, here's my circumstance. What's your opinion? Do you think I'm okay to participate, or should I not?
Right. I mean, in a small town, there... The fact that we all do business with each other in certain levels, there's... There could be construed as the appearance of a conflict, one point, in fact, none exists. But there are, as Counsel Murphy points out, there, we do have resources in which we can refer. And barring that, then just recuse yourself, or consider why you need to make your case. And you also have the checklist, as Mary pointed out, for your committee preferences. Please do them hierarchically, you know? Premium choices, second choices, worst nightmares, you know, and list them, present them to me. I'd like to get those actually done as soon as possible. In the past, when I did this, as my wife equated it with, is trying to do a seating arrangement for a dysfunctional family Thanksgiving. So, this is not a dysfunctional family, but the fact is that we're trying to figure out which is the most effective combination of counselors to create the best governance. Counsel... Counsel Murphy, did you have your hand up the whole time? Okay, I'm sorry.
On the conflict of interest, could you speak to our new counselors for a moment about the rule of necessity, in that we can't, we cannot conflict ourselves out of doing business? And I think that's an important...
That is important, and it's actually... The rule of necessity, and I'm trying to remember, it came up last year.
Yeah, it did.
What was it? I can't remember.
It came around the use of the health insurance.
The health insurance.
Right. Health insurance, thank you. That's right. Something I just dealt with today, but I'm back on the city plan again. There is a possibility that we all would have something that could be perceived as a conflict on a particular issue. Health insurance, for instance, for the city's health insurance plan. The rule of necessity requires that we vote, that actually, we actually do our job and legislate. So, thank you for pointing that out. So, but again, we did that with consultation with the city solicitor. So, we understand what it is that, I mean, the idea is to perform the most open, frank, and clear, and unimpeded governance that we can possibly do. And there will become these really bizarre moments where we could literally be, we could feel that we're stuck and we can't vote at all, and then we are no longer in effective governance, so...
The other place it can come up is zoning.
Yes.
I mean, it's possible that everyone here is a property owner, and in one way or another, new zoning would affect us all differently. Some positively, some negatively, but we still have the job.
Well, there are, and Counsel Adams probably is going to speak to this, there are clear and direct conflicts, though.
It's just, I mean, but they, for example, we all vote on the tax rate, but that doesn't create a conflict for all of us. So, in the case of zoning, it would have to depend, it really would depend on the particular potential conflict, and how direct and close it is to the counselors voting on it.
And again, I would say, in that case, solicit the opinion of the State Ethics Board and the city solicitor. So... And again, yes, so your committee choices. I'm actually not going to grant seniority to people, and I think the newest members are entitled to an opportunity for the committees that people consider choice as anybody else. And again, my primary intent is to craft and create the best, most functional committees. And the purpose of the committees are to serve the council as a whole, and so rather than appoint people based on, which has been done in the past in some level, based on, you know, how long they've served, or how long, or particularly pet projects and stuff. I mean, that actually weighs in on the figuring, but ultimately, I think we're going to, I'm going to try to do the very best I can. This is honestly the hardest part of being a council president, is trying to figure this out. So, I'm just trying to make my apologies upfront, in case there's something that goes awry. Counsel Adams.
But you said you do want us to rank them.
Please rank them, yes. So, I know, so I have a better sense. It'll give me some flexibility. For instance, if I got five people or six people want to be in finance, can't be done. If that's their primary choice, I got to figure out what's the best way to do that. So, that would be, that would be very helpful. Certainly, new business. So far, we've done pretty well. This year's starting off well. Thank you all very much for your vote, and also, thank, I look forward to working with all of you, and thank you very much for this good meeting. I will accept the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.